Good morning, everyone. I will admit, I feel strangely anxious this morning as I am able to be the one of the e-literists this morning, so hopefully I will do that correctly. I am so glad to be here with you this morning. For those of you who may be turning in with a share party, my name is Lisa Smith. I'm one of the pastors here at Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church and glad to welcome you to worship. This morning, as we engage in our livestream worship, you will have the opportunity to chat with our e-literists this morning, to engage with them in worship, and if there are things that we need to be mindful and prayerful about, please share those with us online. Also, for those of you who have kiddos at home or feel like a kid at heart, we have some excellent Sunday School videos that are also on our website that you can click onto from our livestream account, and you can get some great storytellers and some lessons. The kids get to sing and dance and just burn some energy, and I think that if you watch them, you might learn something too. So as we are gathered around our screens right now, gathered together with our hearts and our minds and our souls, let us worship our God together.
Good morning, everyone. While Lee is moving from the organ to the keyboard, we'll discuss the next two hymns we're going to be singing. We're going to start with Paul Beloche's "Because of Your Love," which is one of our favorites, and then Chris Tomlin's "Holy is the Lord." So we will be ready to begin in just a second.
We stand and lift up our heads for the joy of the Lord is our strength. We bow down and worship Him now. How great, how awesome is He. Together we sing. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. The earth is filled with His glory. We stand and lift up our heads for the joy of the Lord is our strength. We bow down and worship Him now. How great, how awesome is He. Together we sing. And everyone sings. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. The earth is filled with His glory. It's rising up all around. It's the heaven of the Lord renowned. It's rising up all around. It's the heaven of the Lord renowned. Together we sing. And everyone sings. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. Holy is the Lord, God Almighty. The earth is filled with His glory. The earth is filled with His glory. Holy, holy is the Lord Almighty. Holy, holy. Holy, holy is the Lord Almighty. Holy, holy. Holy, holy is the Lord Almighty. Holy, holy.
Thank you, Godson. It's always so great to start worship with such upbeat music. Would you please join me now in the prayer of preparation? People of God, come hear the good news. But we hear the voice of God calling us to places we are afraid to go. People of God, take courage in the loving, sustaining presence of God. We are here to find strength and courage, to find faith and hope, to lean on the everlasting, loving arms of God. Let this time of worship quiet our fears, soothe our bruised souls, and energize us for ministry in and with your beloved world. Ah, Lord God, we do not know how to speak words of hope because we listen to the purveyors of fear. We do not know how to be loving because our role models are ridicule and anger. But you know how to forgive, God of kindness, so we pray you would pour out your mercy upon us. May faith abide in us so that we may serve others even as you have served us. May hope abide in us so we may surround the broken with your compassion and grace. May love abide in us, not only in these moments of brokenness, but in every moment of our life with Jesus Christ. The good news is that in our God, we find that safe place for our lives. In God's acceptance, we discover the love in which we may abide in every moment of our lives. Thanks be to God. Amen. Now, please enjoy this video by our chancel choir.
Awesome. Just amazing. The things that are wonderful, talented musicians have been able to do are just inspiring. So, please, if you have a Bible in front of you or with you, or if you want to Google one really quick in another window, follow along with me. In 1 Corinthians, today, we are in 1 Corinthians, chapter 13. We'll be reading the entire chapter together this morning. So please join with me in reading the Word of God as we begin to seek God, both in presence and in spirit this morning together. 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, says this: "If I speak in the tongues of men and of angels, but have not love, I'm only a resounding gong or a claiming symbol. If I have the gift of prophecy and can fathom all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have a faith that can move mountains, but I have not love, then I am nothing. If I give all my possessions to the poor and surrender my body to the flame, but have not love, I gain nothing." Love is patient. Love is kind. It does not envy. It does not boast. It is not proud. It is not rude. It is not self-seeking. It is not easily angered. It keeps no record of wrongs. Love does not delight in evil, but it rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, and always perseveres. Love never fails. But where there are prophecies, they will cease. Where there are tongues, they will be stilled. Where there is knowledge, it will pass away. For we know in part, and we prophesy in part, but when perfection comes, the imperfect disappears. When I was a child, I talked like a child. I thought like a child. I reasoned like a child. When I became a man, I put those childish ways behind me. Now we see but a poor reflection in a mirror. Then we shall see face to face. Now I know in part; then I shall know fully, even as I am fully known. And now these three abide: faith, hope, and love. But the greatest of these is love. May God bless the reading and hearing and understanding of His word in our hearts together. So today, we talk about love. And you know, for me, when I think of love, I immediately go to some of my favorite love songs. And for me, when I think of love songs, I go to Frank Sinatra. "World on a String," "My Funny Valentine." I love the love songs of Frank Sinatra. And so when I think of love, when I think of the feeling that goes along with love, I immediately go to some of those classic love songs. And so this morning, I want us all to get in the mood for love. It might be a little early for that, but in the mood to talk about love, to think about love. I want us to feel something as we start today. So if you have a favorite love song, if you have a favorite love song that just pops into your mind, put it in the chat. You know, normally, I would say this rhetorically to the church, and everyone would go, hmm. But today, we get to see. And so I want to see what your favorite love songs are. I want to hear them. I want to know them. And so while I'm going on a little bit, post your love songs in the chat so we can all kind of see what each other's favorite love songs are. You know, and when we look at 1 Corinthians 13, oftentimes, this kind of love, the love song love, the first dance at your wedding love, that's where we kind of go to for this. Because as a culture, we love love. We love to think about it. We love to, we spend billions of dollars trying to earn it and buy it. We spend hours obsessing about having it or not having it. We write, and we film, and we hashtag it. Everything from shoes, to cars, to mothers, to Facebook posts, we love them all. And we do love love. I love burritos, and I love Star Wars, and I love my family, and I love sun. I love burritos, and I love Star Wars, and I love my family, and I love sunsets, and I love the beach. But I don't love the beach in the same way that I love my family, or definitely not the same way I love Mexican food. We can talk about love so much, but we forget that within this word "love" are so many varied emotions that go around. There's so much different feelings in the mix. And sometimes, what happens is that we can lose what love is exactly in what love is in the broad sense. But yet, rising above all of these impressions of love, all of these different feelings of love, stands this one verse. It is so powerful and poetic, and it paints such a beautiful picture of love that it has transcended just Christianity. If you've ever been to a wedding or to a Hobby Lobby, then you have seen this verse. Because I see it hanging on the walls of houses all the time, and they always get it from Hobby Lobby. But I want to revisit now, now that we've had a minute. What were some of the favorite love songs? What were some of the love songs? I'm gonna have my Eler just yell them out real quick.
"Someone to Watch Over Me."
"Someone to Watch Over Me." Oh, that's a great one.
"All You Need Is Love."
"All You Need Is Love." Do, 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 do. "Unforgettable, that's what you are." Yeah.
"First Day in My Life."
"First Day in My Life." Who's that? Who said that one? Oh, yeah. That's a newer one.
"Close to You from the Carpenters."
"Close to You from the Carpenters." All right.
"Secret Love" by Doris Day.
"Secret Love." Oh, Doris Day! I love Doris Day. Oh, man. That just hit me right there. Awesome. That was Craig Coy that yelled that one out. Sorry for my...
"You're My Best Friend, Please."
"You're My Best Friend"? Oh, that's a great one, too. See, these songs, they all... We connect to them differently because each one of them expresses a little nuance of love, but they all mean something deep to us. And I hope that, as you saw other people throwing in their suggestions, it made you think of other songs and other thoughts about love. And so, now I hope that we are all in the mood, we are ready to talk about love. Because what the reality of this verse is, is that because it has become so ubiquitous in our world that it stands as the de facto Christian viewpoint on love. If something knows... If somebody knows nothing else about Christianity, they will still know that in the Bible, we are called to love people, and that that love should look like 1 Corinthians, chapter 13. 1 Corinthians 13 is the standard of love that we are being held to by the world. If we are not attaining this measure of love, then the world assumes that the love of Christ is either no different than what is found outside of the church, or it doesn't exist. It simply doesn't exist. And the reason why I had us get into a happy mood to start out is because that is where the happiness ends. This is where the challenge begins. That might not seem very encouraging, and that's because it's not. This is... The context which we encounter this verse, weddings, uplifting images shared on the internet, our home decor, they are uplifting and encouraging because that's where we usually encounter this verse. But there is no sense in the Bible that this verse is meant to encourage us. Neither the context of 1 Corinthians, nor the situation that we find this church in, none of it supports that this is meant to be an encouraging, uplifting verse. This passage is meant to be audacious and outlandish. It's meant to attract attention from people and to establish in the world a huge, towering measuring stick by which people outside of the church can judge our love. The gospel spreads like wildfire when the world looks at 1 Corinthians and looks at the church and says that the church is measuring up. When we can put our love next to the measuring stick of 1 Corinthians 13 and stack up, then the gospel spreads like wildfire in the world. When we hold our love up to 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, and it looks puny in comparison, no matter how convincing our words are, no matter how smart we are, no matter how popular we are, no matter how big our platform is, the gospel itself shrinks. The Corinthians had been part of a great gospel advance as Paul went through the Near East proclaiming Jesus as the Messiah. Paul was passionate in word and deed. He wasn't eloquent, or wise, or perfect, but his love was big, and it drew people in. But when Paul left the church in Corinth, its love began to shrink. They abandoned, as Romans 12:10 puts it, "competing with each other and giving mutual respect." And instead, they got sucked into measuring different parts of their lives. They measured their wealth against each other. They measured their spiritual gifts. They measured the prestige of the pastors and teachers that they followed. They focused so much on the ways that they were different that they forgot those important things that made them alike. They got so inwardly focused on the things that made them feel special and successful and important that they forgot that to love other people as much as they loved themselves. This passage was not written to encourage these Corinthians. It was written because while the Corinthians have money, and gifts, and talents, and wisdom, they were bankrupt in the one thing that made all those other things matter: love. The Corinthian church was mired in the muddy water of division, difference, disagreement, personal conflict, and self-righteousness. Paul's description of love is his desperate attempt to right this ship and to show the Corinthians that they can't just... They can't just focus on themselves and pretend that the world isn't watching. Paul is ashamed. Paul is ashamed that they're representing Christ in the world and that they're showing... That in their actions, they're showing that the love of Jesus is not as powerful as Paul is saying. That their actions are undercutting the proclamation of the gospel by giving people evidence to say, maybe, this love that Paul is talking about isn't actually as powerful as he's saying it is. The Corinthians, and perhaps we today, don't realize it, but we never stop representing Christ in the world. There's no day off or cheat day for those that follow Christ. Every moment of every day, we are declaring publicly, whether we want to or not, how we measure up to the standard of 1 Corinthians 13. Both in and out of the church, everyone knows those words. And so, we are either measuring ourselves and declaring that this love is real and powerful, or we are measuring ourselves and declaring that we maybe haven't bought into it yet. And when we do that, when we measure up and find ourselves lacking, we are actually proclaiming to the world that the love of Christ might not be what we're saying it is with our words. We're proclaiming that this could be just like any other old, beautiful poem. Pretty, but ultimately art and not reality. But if the love of God is not real, life-changing or different than the love found in the world, then what reason is there to believe in God at all? Our love, as is projected into the world, is what creates the foundation of faith, not just for us, but for everyone around us. People need to believe that this kind of love is possible before they believe that Jesus loved them enough to die for them. If we can't show people that there is hope for change, a different kind of love, then why would anyone believe it? I think a lot of us are aware of this, even if we've never actually said it or heard it so directly. I'll tell you how I see the church react to this problem of knowing that our love doesn't actually reflect a belief in the words of this verse. Since we can't magnify our love, what we do is diminish our Christianity. We hide our faith in a vain attempt to avoid public comparison to this standard, lest we be exposed as Christians without love, like the Corinthians were being by Paul. We rationalize this by saying that our aim is not... is to make others not feel uncomfortable by talking about faith. We say that we don't believe God wants us to be people who are in others' faces about faith. In an attempt to protect our pride, we follow the path of the Corinthian church. We actually create a division in the body of Christ by making a distinction between ourselves and Christians that are endeavoring to proclaim Jesus Christ, the Messiah. And we portray them as the problem. That's crazy to me, but I see Christians do it constantly. They portray the proclamation of Jesus as somehow the problem in an attempt to vindicate themselves for not having the faith or love that would empower them to successfully proclaim Christ themselves. Is that you this morning? The motivation behind publicly diminishing our own Christianity is the hope that if we lead people to believe that we are intentionally being less spiritual publicly, then people will assume that privately, we are being spiritually measured up. So, 1 Corinthians 13. We're trying to tell people that what you're seeing in us is actually us just trying to be polite. When the reality is, is that people can see... People can see through that. There's no sense of buying in. When we try to... When we hope that if we prop up the public declaration of Christ as the problem and portray good Christians as the people who hide their faith in order to not make people uncomfortable, then people will assume that while there's nothing different about our actions, about our deeds, that we'll have something else that would distinguish us that's hidden. Do we really think that works? It does not. It does not. But yet, I see it constantly. I see it all the time. But ultimately, it's... The point of that is to make ourselves feel better about ourselves and to hide the fact that we are not believing that 1 Corinthians 13 is really a call for our life, a really a call for reality. I'll put it in the words of Paul. Have you ever heard a cymbal soloist? What is there of benefit in hearing a cymbal soloist? Somebody just standing... If I stood on the stage and just grabbed two cymbals and just crash, 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 crash. There's nothing of value in that. That's just a bunch of noise. There is nothing appealing musically about a cymbal soloist. But if you're saying that you're living a life of faith, but neglecting love, that is exactly what you are, in the words of Paul. This was the problem of the Corinthians. You want... They were... Their solution to the problem of not having love was to create more division because that is exactly the way of the world. When we lack God's love, we try to create division to prop us up and say, at least we're not as bad as this group, or at least we're not following this teacher, or at least we're not... We try to make ourselves feel better by comparing and contrasting, by creating division. You want to know God? Then start loving. You want to change the world? Start loving. This isn't an abstract, generic, throwaway, meaningless, trite, Christian answer. I'm not putting some vague image of love out there in the universe and asking you to sink or swim towards this nebulous destination without direction. In this passage, there are fifteen real-life, flesh and blood, measurable things that we can use in our life to increase our love. These fifteen things are the non-negotiables of faith in Jesus Christ. You can do every other single thing of faith, but if you aren't working towards progress in these fifteen areas, then you might as well be a cymbal soloist. Paul's kind of love involves telling the truth, being resilient, being consistent, tolerating the weaknesses and shortcomings of others. It declares that love does not seek after itself, but if given a choice between fulfilling a personal need and the need of somebody else, we'll choose the other every time. It's not offensive. It doesn't seek to hurt anyone. It maintains the best interest of others at all times. Love affirms other people as valued in the eyes of God, fully human and equal. They assign value based on the value that God gives them, not the value that the divisions in our world try to assign to them. Love is the only means by which believers have a chance to live fully in the knowledge and fellowship of God. And the world is constantly testing our love to see if it's real or just a bunch of talk, to see if we really believe that love can look like 1 Corinthians 13, or if deep down, Christians just think that it's some beautiful poetry meant for weddings, but isn't practical for real life. Because the world is saying that type of love is impossible. It's impossible to put others before yourself, to truly forgive like Jesus forgives. Think of the radical nature of Jesus' forgiveness. None of us are perfect, but yet, we are the body of Christ in the world. It is our calling as Christians to live like Christ did so that people in the world might see that these are not just empty, impossible words, but that this kind of love is possible for us here and now because the church is living it out. We need to love. We need to drop the frassades and the ruses, the lies and the self-protective images that we throw out. We need to drop the kitschy home decor and the inspirational images. We need to be people that lay down divisiveness and pick up love. Not just in talk, not just among those that we agree with. But it is imperative in our world today that we reject division, that we reject the things that pull us apart, and we grab on to the God that is pushing us out of our comfort zones and into love. Our hope is no longer tied to the things that we have, or achieve, or the things that we know, and instead, our value is gauged by how our love lifts up the world around us and makes it a better place. It's impossible to be divisive. It is impossible to be divisive when our primary aim is love because the love of God anchors us in the well-being of others. I not only love you, but I am living out that love for you daily in my thoughts and deeds. The hard part about this standard of love is that it is so big. And the great thing about it is that it's so big. Nothing I've said today requires us to be completely there in every way when it comes to love. So if you desire to turn away from divisiveness and towards love this morning, then I want to encourage you to read 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, with new eyes to pick one, just one, of those fifteen attributes that Paul pulls out, and then define your life by the pursuit of that attribute. Orient your whole self around, not the whole picture, but just one thing. Because what's gonna happen, when you make that one thing a habit, the effort and exertion that it will take to get there will become less. And then you can look towards the next attribute, and you can start implementing that into your life, step by step, moment by moment, thing by thing. But you know what's great about love? I'll tell you that even just picking at one and taking the first step, the moment you take that first step, people will look at you and see the way that you act, and they will see a difference. Not at the end, not at the final destination, not when we've made it and we're perfect in love, but people will see the difference at the first step. Our world is filled to the eyeballs with hatred, violence, oppression. Taking one step in love immediately shows a difference. It immediately declares that there is something different motivating you. And when that starts to happen, you'll begin to understand the truth of Paul's words. You'll begin to see that both the world inside of you and around you will begin to transform. This is not rocket science. This is not a miracle. This is what being a Christian is all about. It's all that being a Christian is about. Everything else is decorations. We are not a bunch of super-intelligent, well-dressed, prodigious, cymbal soloists in the world. So walk away from our divisiveness. Walk in love. Walk away from our self-righteousness. Walk in love. Today, walk in love. Amen. Amen.
We would like to remind those who are participating live that you're invited to share your comments and prayer requests. We will be collecting as many as we can to share in the prayers of our community as we declare our faith through song. Please enjoy this Godsend video. These videos are absolutely amazing, and I really, I can't thank Godsend and Chantel Choir and all those who are involved in these videos enough for enhancing our worship so, so wonderfully. This morning, as we continue with prayers of the community, if you would respond after each prayer request with saying, "Lord, hear my prayer." But before we start with the prayer requests this morning, I want to share a joy. Congratulations out there, Eric and Peggy Eschleman, on your 45th wedding anniversary. If you were here in worship, you'd hear us all clapping for you, so you just have to pretend we're all clapping for you virtually. And now for our prayers. Prayers for Sharice Neber, who's going through chemotherapy for cancer. Lord, hear our prayer. Prayers for Steve Marsh, who's being monitored for an irregular heartbeat. Lord, hear our prayer. Prayers for Mariah Singer's sister, Vicki, for successful and for healing with her upcoming surgery. Lord, hear our prayer. Prayers for Greg Roper, who's having a CT scan tomorrow and had fallen a few weeks ago. Lord, hear our prayer. Prayers for Malia Lewis's cousin, son Mike, who was in a mountain bike accident and has possible brain damage. Lord, hear our prayer. Are there any other prayers this morning? Then I'd like you to join me in prayer, and I have to tell you, I found this really beautiful anonymous prayer written especially for the chapter in Corinthians, chapter 13, so please pray with me. You call us beloved, and you love us with a fierceness that is at once unsettling and comforting. May your divine love dwell within us and be enacted through us so that no matter what language we speak, love will dance within each word we say. When you call us to stand up for justice, love will be the power that drives our actions. When we seek knowledge, love will compel us beyond idle curiosity, all the way to the truth. When we offer our prayers in faith, love for you will fill our hearts with peace. When we give of ourselves and our possessions, love for you and your people will shine above love for worldly things. Thank you, Almighty God, for this marvelous gift of love, and empower us to walk the path that love opens before us. Hear us now, dear Father, as we pray that prayer that your Son taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you for those prayers, and thank you, everyone who has contributed to our time of worship together. I never get very far past "love is patient" because that's my biggest stumbling block, so I have to just keep working on that one. I don't think I'll get to the other 14, but I will continue to try. And I am continually inspired by the love that our congregation shows to one another. I know that in this environment, we are asked to continue to be connected virtually through technology, connected digitally, and if you were born before 1990, that sometimes is difficult. We're not all digital natives, and yet we've been asked to kind of connect that way. So I encourage you to find your way to us through our website, through our Facebook, Instagram, and those ways to connect and to connect with one another. But also let us show the love. Let us be instruments of that amazing love that God has shared with us through his Son, Jesus Christ, by reaching out to connect to others that we know that may not be able to connect in the ways that we do through technology. I am so grateful to hear about those who are writing notes to one another, making phone calls, checking in, just to make sure that we are together as a family of faith. So I encourage you to continue to do that and make sure that you are up to date with what's going on. Church, we can do amazing things in this space that we have now where we are being recreated by our God into, into a place where that love of God is shared. So let us do that together. Right after this service, right after Lee's amazing postlude, we will be having a town hall together to tell you about great things that are going on in our midst, including our construction, how we are proposing to gather safely when we can do that, and many other ways to connect. So please stick in with us, stay online so that we can share those with you, and you can give us your questions via chat and comment.
Family of faith, thank you for joining with us in worship. Thank you for proclaiming Jesus Christ in the world. You, when we gather, when you and I gather, we create the body of Christ. This is our only aim as the church. If we help each other and encourage each other and love each other, then Christ is going to spread in the world because love is contagious. That feeling that we get when we love is something that we chase after our whole lives, and we fill with so many meaningless things that give us that feeling for a moment. But Jesus Christ stands next to the cross, saying, "This love is not only a feeling for you to feel, but it is the person that you were created to be." Join with us as we pursue that love together. God bless you, keep you, guide you, hold you, lift you up, and comfort you during this time. Until we meet again, God bless you.
Our gracious and almighty God, what a time for us to be gathered together and the new sense of that word that that means, but we are so glad that you continue to allow our church to move forward, to seek new and fabulous ways to share the gospel love that you have for us. So this day, continue to be with us as we share this information with our congregation. In Christ's name we pray, amen. So we have our construction video first. Woo, let's go.
Good morning. I'm Jim Bogunreef, and I'm one of your currently serving elders. This morning, I'd like to give you an update on the fire reconstruction of the fellowship hall. By now, most of you know that By now, most of you know that construction has begun. Hooray for that. It was a lengthy process to get the plans and engineering completed and approved by the city of Anaheim. But all of that is now complete and we are well on our way in the construction process. As part of that process, we were required by the city to upgrade our facilities to current codes. As a result of this, we will now have a new fire sprinkler system in the fellowship hall, ADA compliant bathrooms, a new staircase, and new energy efficient HVAC systems with modern controls. The good news is that our insurance policy is picking up $300,000 worth of these code upgrades. The bad news is that these upgrades will cost us close to about $500,000. Speaking of numbers, I am happy to tell you that we have been approved by our Presbyterian to obtain a new low interest rate loan to help with some of the upgrades and improvements that were not covered by our insurance. We have been approved for a total of $775,000. And the good news is that we will only need to borrow what we truly need. Since a picture's worth a thousand words, let's take a quick look at some of the progress that has been made. But before we do that, I wanted to give a shout out to the ad hoc committee, the group that is really the ones that are managing this project. Our chair, Pete Lapsich, Vanessa Bates, Doug Brown, Jerry Connery, and of course Bruce Kidd, our construction manager who is always on the job. This group is a well-oiled machine and working extremely hard. If you get a chance, please thank one of these individuals and let them know you appreciate all that they do. Thank you.
You guys are live, so you can answer questions that we don't have. Do we have questions over here? So you wowed them, Jim. Like you completely wowed them with the information, so.
I will say one thing, that when the, when we start to fund the loan, there's gonna be opportunities for members of the congregation to invest in it as we did the last time we had a mortgage. And the interest rate is significantly better than what can be gotten on a typical CD. And as we get investors on those loans, it actually reduces the amount of interest that the church pays. So right now, we're guaranteed a interest rate of 2.75% for all the things that are green in our project and a little over three for those things that are not green, not environmental. But the bottom line is, is that if we can get some investors out there to participate in the program, earning a higher commission or a higher interest rate than they would earn on a CD, with the same kind of safety, the church will see even a lower rate. So more to come on that later.
So I now have questions. So here are some of our questions that we have. What about the downstairs?
Downstairs is a moderate remodel. There will be a new fire sprinkler system, new HVAC, a small redesign of the offices, and new paint, so kind of a freshening up of the downstairs.
All right, and can you describe the layout of the upstairs?
Pretty much the same as it was before, new kitchen. You guys saw the video of kind of the walkthrough. There will be a shower in there now, ADA bathrooms, luxury vinyl flooring throughout the whole thing.
All right, and do we have a completion date?
We do. We expect it to be complete by October 1st. So be prayerful and it should come through.
All right, so that's good. And then of course, the ever-present elevator question.
What was the question?
Well, the question was, is the elevator part of this project? And then just elevator?
The elevator is a part of the project. We're in the final stages of finalizing the contract. We pushed that out just due to COVID-19. It seemed prudent that we just push that project a few, a few weeks, been about a month behind the rest of it. But the stage right now is we're at finalization of contracts.
We're going to an expert contractor on elevators. So we have one contractor working on the renovation and the restoration, and we have a different contractor actually building the elevator because that's our specialty.
All right, and one final question, will the downstairs offices open soon? October 1.
October 1. Yeah, I will tell you this, though. It's going to be really laid out in a much more efficient way. And the entrance won't be what it used to be. It'll be the door that used to be Lisa's office. That'll now be the new entry into the office. It's gonna be a few other things that are changed and we can't wait to show it off. And we'll soon be asking our fellowship committee to start planning our open houses and our swinging open the doors and letting everybody in because it's gonna be so exciting.
Open houses. Well, thank you both of you very much for being, serving on the committee, for being here today and answering questions. And any other questions from y'all? We've had a, how many people will the elevator hold? And I believe it's like.
15.
Oh, 15?
Yeah, it's either 12 or 15.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm just like going like.
Big boy.
All right, so we can social distance in the elevator. Woo-hoo! Yes, Jerry Rudman, we can stay in the West Campus until October 1. I think our lease is actually through the 15th, so we're good.
Yes, it is.
We're good. All right, so we are gonna change gears and go to the next video, which is about our safe gatherings.
With the advent of the COVID-19 coronavirus, we've been asked by our state and local officials to practice social distancing and adhere to stay-at-home guidelines to slow the transmission of the virus. These stay-at-home orders included the temporary suspension of in-person church services and gatherings. With the safety and health of our congregants and our neighbors in mind, we have moved to virtual worship services that you can enjoy anywhere, along with creative music offerings, in addition to modified small groups, service teams, and workspaces. As the state of California and the county of Orange begin moving into stage two on the roadmap of modifying the statewide stay-at-home order, our session has appointed a task group to develop our safe gatherings protocols and guidelines. Our task group includes current and past elders and deacons, some at-large members with particular experience, and several staff members. We are currently reviewing all available guidelines and recommendations from various sources, including the CDC, the state of California, the county of Orange, the Presbyterian Church, and our neighboring sister churches. As we develop recommendations for session regarding protocols for our congregation as guided by state and local standards, when it becomes appropriate to phase in in-person meetings and gatherings, as we complete our work, we will make recommendations to session for their consideration and approval as we look forward to creating a safe environment for faithful gathering when it is reasonable to do so. Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church, you are being strong and courageous, and your faithfulness is an example of the kingdom of God here on earth. Please feel free to contact any member of the task force with questions or ideas. Until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand.
But I'm not on Facebook yet. Hi, everyone. Sorry, there's like this delay. I was watching on Facebook. Thank you all for watching the video about our safe gathering. So we've put together a task group from our church that are looking at all the different variables so that we can put together a comprehensive plan for our church as it becomes safer for us to gather in smaller groups and then larger groups, how we will use effectively our property, our indoors and our outdoors, so that we might be able to come together again. So we just wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at on that. We've met and we're about ready to divide into subgroups and work groups so that we can get that information out to you. So I don't know if, are there, were there questions from? No questions there? No questions. All right, well, I'm gonna give you 10 more seconds to type. Type, 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 type. All right, another like wowzum with the video. So our next information that we have to share with you is from Brian Counter, our elder for stewardship. And Vanessa Bates is here to answer questions, and it has to do with our financial update. So please enjoy the next video.
Hello, my name is Brian Counter, and I am the elder for stewardship. I hope everyone's doing well and staying safe during these unprecedented times. I'd also like to thank our church staff for all the hard work in transforming the way we continue our ministry. We log in each week to see what Lisa, Matt, and the music programs have for us. Our kids must really enjoy the Sunday school lessons because they're dancing around during the dance party. So I want to give you an update on where we are on our year-to-date contributions. Our pledge contributions are up by $1,250. Our non-pledge contributions are down by $4,700. The reason for that is because we are not meeting in person and that's where the money goes into the offertory plates. Our year-to-date other income is down by $1,300, meaning our total income is down $4,650. The good thing is, it's not all doom and gloom. Due to the shelter in place and the social distancing, it has reduced our expenses by $16,000. So what does he ask? We're asking for those of you that can to do one of a couple of things. One, log into the church app and be able to give a little bit more than you normally do. Or two, when you do write your check to the church, to be able to add a little bit more than you normally do. Or, on a third note, you can invite my kids over and they can look for the loose change in either your car or your furniture. All kidding aside, we appreciate your continued support and are always looking for ways to serve the Lord. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
So a follow-up question to the gathering was, will we continue to livestream? It is our, it is our intention to continue livestreaming. I feel like livestreaming is here for good. And so we will continue to incorporate that into our worship services so that those of you who are remaining at home or when vacations happen again in a couple of years, you're on vacation, you can still worship with us. Won't it be fantastic? So, and then the comment I got was, Brian Counter, what a great last name for the stewardship elder. Yeah, so I am waiting for questions. But while we're waiting, Vanessa, is there anything that you would like to add? And then we'll call on our live audience, Roger Bailey.
Yeah, one thing I do want to add is normally we send out quarterly statements. And so you would have received those in the month of April. However, because of the way that COVID has changed how we live, we decided to wait until the income was in for the end of April. So you will be seeing your contribution statements through the month of April sometime in this month of May. Roger? That's a great question. I can tell you, the elders have spent very little in their budgets. Oh, the question was, where did we realize the $16,000 in savings? Primarily, we're realizing that money in, your elders who each have a budget, who have been very good stewards and haven't spent hardly any money in their budget at all. We also have had a reduction in utilities primarily because we're not in the offices and so our utilities have been dropping. We have had an increase in some expenses because of our livestream, but it hasn't been enough yet to counterbalance the savings that we have encountered over good stewardship for the first four months of this year.
Vanessa, you're planning on presenting to session a revised budget, correct, for the year that reflects what we've learned so far?
Yes, I am. I did send a revised budget out to session. And in that revised budget, we have reduced income, particularly in plate, to match where we are and where we're likely be for a while. Conversely, we've reduced some of our elders' budget amounts simply because they're not spending it because we're not worshiping in our normal fashion. But we have, in fact, increased a couple to allow more mission work in the community and to allow for increased communications. Our communications have been doing a great job, but it does cost money to send those texts out. It costs money to send the newsletters out and the new technology and hopefully some additional technology that we have coming also will be additional expense. With all that said, our expenses and our income will be less than we originally budgeted.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any other questions that anyone saw coming online? Well, thank you for, both you and Brian, for putting that together, letting our church know where we're at. And I do know that actually we have been able to focus more on mission and community service. And so we have resources going in that direction and in our communications. So we've been able to respond appropriately to what is going on and using the resources that we have to continue to show care and compassion to our own congregation, our own family of faith, and out into the community. So that is great news for all of us. So we want to always make sure that you know that there are ways to connect virtually with others within our congregation. And so we have a video about the different small groups and other live events that are going on weekly within our church. So are we ready with that video? Thank you.
Anyhow, I wanted our congregation to know more about what the ways that they might be able to connect through a small group, even though our groups right now are meeting over Zoom, livestream, or there, I know some people share through our social media and stuff, and those are the ways that they can get connected. So I wanted you all to be able to share about the things that you're doing because I'm really grateful for the workers.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Yeah, our, our home group has about doubled in size since the self-isolation went into place, but that's great. We're doing it on Zoom. We're doing it right now on a study of the differences between different Christian denominations and how those came to be. It's one of the topics that the group requested. We've got about three more weeks of that. And then I'll be doing a brief biblical history, jumped through the Bible to help people kind of understand the overview of the Bible. And that's the other topic that they requested. and that's the other topic that they requested, so that'll start in about three weeks. Love to have anybody join us. It is possible to do a new home group, someone that wants to lead one on their own. I'd be happy to provide all the information that they need, and they won't have to come up with any discussion points on their own. That'd be great. We spend about an hour on Monday nights talking about the lesson, and about another half an hour just in fellowship with one another, checking up on each other and seeing how we're doing through all of this. And Tuesday morning Bible study has been great because we're a bunch of women in the church who have, for the most part, we've got about 20 women who have figured out how to use Zoom, figured out that it's not that hard after all, and so we're doing the same lessons that we do on the home group. Love to have more people join us. Just let me know.
Well, we're like the children of Israel. We're, we're working our way through the wilderness here. It's interesting, of course, food is very important for us on Wednesday mornings when we have our Bible study. So when we lost the fellowship hall, we lost a full breakfast. And then, then we, then we went to the West Campus when that opened up, and there we were able to bring food, and then, of course, the virus. And we've been Zooming ever since, and I think Jana mentioned that too. Our, our membership or our participation has gone up since we've Zoomed, because it's very easy just to roll out of bed and get on the screen or get on the phone and participate. So what we've been doing with Zoom and with the pandemic is that Mike has been producing a series of devotionals, scripture dealing with the pandemic. So he started with Exodus and the leadership of Moses, and we've had a lot of, a lot of similarities between what they went through and what we're going through with the, with the coronavirus. So that's where we are right now. Fellowship is very important to us, and the guys are really good about participating in all the other organizations, charity organizations that we have.
Sure. Hi, Lisa. Presbyterian Women, this is our 12th year Presbyterian Women, and we start our, our group, every woman in the congregation is a member of Presbyterian Women, but some of us are organized into what we call circles, and we start in September, we finish in about May. This past year, we did a wonderful Bible study on the Ten Commandments called Love Carved in Stone, which we all really enjoyed. Circles meet once a month. Since we have not been able to meet physically, we've been meeting, by, two of the circles have been meeting in Zoom groups. And the thing about Presbyterian Women is, you know, women, we all just, we nurture all the time anyway, so we're all busy calling each other, supporting each other, caring about each other. But we were able this year to donate socks and underwear. We did our Knock Your Socks Off program, and that entailed, that was 462 pair of socks and almost 100 pair of underwear that we were able to donate to Mercy House and the Shower Ministry, so we felt wonderful about. And we also donated gift cards. We're picking up a new charity this year called Skyview School, and we're so excited about supporting them. We donated gift cards to their families. We were able to do...
I know, too, that you've been leading a book club as well that meets every other month, and so you're going to meet virtually if you need to, or depending on restrictions?
Yep, we're meeting virtually at the end of this month. We're doing a Zoom group. We just read a wonderful book called The Book Women, The Book Women of Troublesome Creek, and if you didn't ever know that there were blue people, look up the blue people, and you'll find out about that. And yes, we're meeting, we're meeting by Zoom and hoping that we'll, you know, get together. We meet every other month, fourth Tuesday of the odd month.
So our Church of the Wild group is meeting every Tuesday at 5:30, and what we do is we study the scriptures that we will be using in the worship service on Sunday. So yes, it does help with sermon prep. I get a lot of great ideas from that group, but it also helps the people that, that all of us that come together is we look at the background and the context and the culture of when these particular scriptures were written and who they were written for, and then how does that now move forward and apply that to us today? And so we get some great discussions about those scriptures. So we got a lot of good questions. Sometimes they do stump the pastor, and that's great, and then I try to get back to them later. So anybody, again, it's an open group, 5:30 on Tuesdays. Love to have you.
Yeah, so in my opinion, daily time in the Word of God is one of the most daunting, but most helpful spiritual disciplines that we can cultivate. I wanted to make sure that Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church was actually stepping out in leadership in that, in specific ways. And so the 5:00 PM Bible study is, is really our way of, of leading the way forward towards lifetime discipleship by introducing people to daily time in the Word of God, showing that we can establish this habit in our life, that we can protect this time, that it's not a huge sacrifice, it doesn't take a lot, but the benefits of it in our life, just being in God's Word, reading our Bible, studying daily, is something that can have a truly profound effect. So that's kind of what, why we're doing it, and, and I think it's a really, really important that, you know, we're, we're kind of setting the pace to establish those habits in our life.
Also, I think you're running our youth programs for students through virtual things, although those are digital natives, so is that a little bit different, running that with the student?
Well, what's been really incredible about our discussions with our students is that it's easy to buy into the stereotype that they actually want more digital content, when the reality is, is that there's a real sense of, of digital burnout right now with our students. You know, it's, it's been, it's been tough to, 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 to set up times, you know, where we're on Zoom or doing something like that, because there's, now that school is all online and their relationships are all online and everything, everything is all online, they're actually discovering the real, the real importance that in-person relationships have. And so it's been, it's been good that, that they're able to navigate the tools, but it's been tough because they really, really want to be in person with each other. Yeah, it's, it's, we're meeting virtually, but, but I think there's a lot, I think God is doing a lot of things in the lives of students right now.
The world, and this is a whole new way of evangelism, and I'm just grateful that we have this for our congregation and for those, our neighbors and friends and community who may be feeling disconnected. Well, thank you all for watching about all the different ways we have to connect. I know one of the questions was, how do we connect? And I had actually put a little video together for that, but I was so bad at editing at that point that I was like, no, we should not use that one. But I can tell you how you can connect. It's a very easy to get signed up for a group. If you go to our webpage, if you're a webpage user, you can just go to the top bar and you'll see Grow and Serve. You click on that, you go to the box that says Groups, and it'll drop you all the way down, and you'll see a little button that says Join a Group, and all you need to do is click that one, and it'll give you all the groups that are open and that you can join, and then it'll just ask you for information. So literally, it's just a few clicks of the mouse, typing in your name, and away you go, and that information will get to the particular leader, and you will be included in that, and then you'll get information about how to jump on to those Zoom calls. If you have a mobile device and you have our app loaded on your phone, it's even easier to join groups. You just have to hit the app at the very bottom. You'll see four little icons, and one of those says Groups. You hit the group icon, it'll take you straight to all the groups that are open, and again, you just need a few clicks and your name and email, and away you go. So it is that easy to join. If all of that is like, oh, my gosh, I can't do that, because I get it, because I had to edit videos this weekend, so totally get it. Here's the easy, office@canyonhillspc.org. Katie Kerr will get all of those emails, and she will get them out to all of us who can answer the questions and get you all signed up, ready to go. So if all else fails, office@canyonhillspc.org. Easy. Yes, Vanessa?
Yes, one of the questions, are any of these groups recorded and posted someplace else that can be viewed at a later time? And then it's taken over the...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go ahead and take that one. So with our livestream, anything that is livestreamed, so our 5:00 PM daily devotionals, our Sunday morning worship, all of those immediately after we hit...
And this town hall!
And, and this town hall. As soon as we, as soon as we go offline, that is automatically saved to our Facebook page. So if you go to Facebook and search Canyon Hills Presbyterian Church, there will be a little video button on that page. You can not only catch up with our last few weeks of daily devotionals, you can see, or re-watch our, our Sunday morning services when, when, when you really need to just hear an inspiring word. So everything that we do on our livestream is recorded. Most of our Zoom things, because those are done in confidentiality, like when you have Bible study, a lot of times that's a, that's a confidential group, and it's understood that you're doing life together, and that that doesn't go beyond that group in order to create a deeper sense of vulnerability. And so our Zoom Bible studies usually are not recorded. You can't be a fly on the wall in those, but certainly any of our livestream things are, are there on our Facebook and on our website as well, though it usually takes a few hours or a day for them to show up on our website. But that, that's to answer that question. Please catch up on our devotionals and our Sunday morning worship, because all of those are recorded.
All right. No other questions. All right, so our last thing to share with you today is our video about how you can connect with mission and community service, because that team has been doing a great job finding new ways to support those who find themselves in very vulnerable situations now, especially because of the COVID virus and other things that are going on our lives. So we want to share with you again what Mary Byrne and her team have been up to in mission and community service.
Good morning, Canyon Hills. I'm here with a moment for mission. My name is Mary Byrne from the Mission and Community Service Committee. During this time of quarantine and social distancing, just staying at home is helping others, but we are still called to try to reach out into our community to help those who are struggling. While the mission committee has had to adapt our community service activities, since we can't do in-person volunteering, we found many ways to continue helping the vulnerable in our community with support from our congregation. We are continuing to support Shower Ministry Plus, who is deemed an essential service and is continuing to provide meals to the homeless of Garden Grove twice a week. We are collecting to-go foods, which will be given out to help the homeless between meals. Shower Ministry continues to ask for clothing donations, too. Because Northeast of the Well worship services have been canceled, we are not able to serve our monthly meal to these men and women who are overcoming addiction and abuse. We asked if there were other ways we could help, so instead, we will be delivering dinner to a group home run by Grandma's House of Hope that houses some of the women who would otherwise attend the Monday night service. Since we are not able to send volunteers to the Giving Children Hope warehouse to pack backpacks during the lockdown, we have adopted a family from Melrose Elementary through the organization Lot 318 in Placentia. Our congregation will be providing a list of groceries and supplies to our family every two weeks to address specific needs requested by the family. We dropped off our first load of groceries this week. Our mission committee and Presbyterian Women's group has formed a new partnership with Skyview Elementary School in Orange, which is an alternative education program that focuses on homeless youth from kindergarten to eighth grade. The school has a resource pantry where these students' families can pick up food, toiletries, and other supplies. Improving the home life for these families will help the students immensely, especially during this difficult time. This week, we dropped off a shopping cart full of toiletries and cleaning supplies, as well as Target gift cards to help these at-risk families. So you might be asking yourself, how can I help? You can donate to-go foods to Shower Ministry Plus. You can donate toiletries and cleaning supplies to Skyview Elementary School. You can sign up to provide groceries one week for our adopted family through Lot 318. Donate supplies by arranging a porch pickup or drop-off with the mission committee. Score! You can make a financial donation to mission to help us purchase supplies. Go to our church website to offer to help with our mission projects or to make a donation to mission, or you can contact me directly. Even during these difficult times, let's continue to be the hands and feet of Jesus in our community. God bless and stay safe.
So thanks for hanging out with us today. A little extension of our worship service. I'm so grateful for all the work, for all the people that have gone into producing both worship and our town hall to try to get you guys all up to date with all the wonderful things that are going on. Please, please, reach out to us because we want to be connected and contact you, so let's make sure that those contacts and connections stay strong. So many different ways to be involved, even though we can't be gathered together, but even, even so, there will be a time where we can do that again safely, and we look forward to that. So if you have other questions, please feel free to post those on our Facebook or our website from the livestream, or just email us directly at the office, and we'll be glad to answer any other questions. So are there questions? Anyone has last minute? We are good, thank you very much. Let's pray, and have a fabulous rest of your Sunday. Lord God, we thank you for all the ways that people are sharing love, that they are setting aside the things that divide and instead focusing on the love that unites. Lord God, help us to continue in that direction and that way as we learn how to be church all over again. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.